Okay, we start at six o'clock, the pre-meeting conference, November 16th, 2022. Our first piece of legislation that is presented to us is a proclamation for Patrick Johnson. Let's see. It's sponsored by Councilman DeBrenge and Councilman Irving. If my two colleagues wouldn't mind, I'd like to have full counsel on it.
Yeah.
Is there any discussions on the proclamation?
What we want to do is probably waive the rules of order and try to get it done first. So we'll do that when we hit the floor with it.
Mr. President, you have the right to do that.
Okay.
Full time.
Next.
Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Celeste Friend. Oh, I'm sorry. If you've got a council on mind, would you mind if I sponsor that? This is for her appointment for the land bank. This is open discussion. Is there any discussions? I don't think too many people want to take this effort and thank Celeste for going there and taking the responsibility. Would you like to say a couple of words?
No, all I'll say is I really enjoy being on the land bank. I'm learning a lot about housing. It's great. I'm now on the executive board, so it'd be good if they didn't, if we didn't, yeah, I'd like to stay on. Thank you.
Okay. Is this a, just a quick question, is this a council appointment or is this?
It is.
Okay. Should we not go past your, like, the end of your term? Like, 2000, the end of 2000, December 31st, 2023?
What is the term of this appointment? Do we know?
The term of this appointment is as written on the legislation.
Two-year term?
Yeah.
Well, if that's the appointment term, Samantha, I guess we're okay with it. Because at the end of-
Well, yeah, no, I'm just saying, like, if, for example, like, if I was appointed to something and I wasn't on the council, then the council, because it's a council appointment, like, you're on there by way of being a council person.
Same thing happened to Joe. When they still, he wasn't here anymore, but he was still on-
He was still on it?
He was still on the land bank.
Oh, I did not know that. That shouldn't have been-
Yeah, I know. I understand.
I promise if I'm no longer on the council-
All right, I get it. I shouldn't have done that either.
Yeah, yeah, I see where you're coming from.
So we're all okay in our colleague's appointment?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by the majority minority leader. It's on the sale of beer and wine for Bank of Utica, looking like a New Year's Eve party. I hope that everybody participates. Any discussions? Very good. Discussion is closed. Let's move to the next piece. I would be very happy to sponsor Mr. Beatrice's Commissioner of Deeds clerk. Joey, you really lived there, 3524 Real Street? Is that where you live?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. Our next piece of legislation is a Commissioner of Deeds for myself.
I'd like to sponsor this one, Mr. Miola.
Thank you. Celeste Friend? Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Our next piece, which I would be very happy to sponsor, is for Venice Irving, my colleague at 22 Johnson Park. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. I'd also like to sponsor our next piece of legislation for my colleague Bobby Burmaster, 1426 City Street, for Commissioner of Dees. Any dis- Oh, thank you. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Beatrice for Councilman Frank DeBrenge, 1008 Beckwith Place. Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Next piece of legislation sponsored by myself for Andrew Castelli, 1410 Floral Court. You know, I just had a complaint on this floral court over there. Is your house?
He's gonna complain because his last name's Castilla, not Castelli.
Is there any discussions? Discussion is closed. Our next piece is sponsored by myself and Mark Williamson, Councilman Williamson. This is for Martha Anne Markowitz? Markowitz?
Who is she?
Who is this?
Well, this is in Westmoreland. Our clerk has some additional information for my colleagues to share, which might have the floor.
Yep, she's an employee at the county building, so she did submit a copy of her pay stub for proof that she's in that office.
Okay. Any questions? Any discussions? Discussion is closed. Next piece of legislation is for Irving Moon Property. First piece is sponsored by Councilman Irving, is for the sale of 1306 Seymour Ave. Councilman Irving, are you in support of this legislation?
Yes.
All right, the first piece is number 11. That's a public hearing. We need to vote on that. And the next piece, we need to refer to committee. All in favor of that? Any discussions? Okay. Our next piece from URA is also sponsored by Councilman Irving, is for the sale of 1636 Dudley Ave. First piece, of course, is the public hearing, and second piece is the sale. Miss Councilman Irving, are you in favor of the sale?
Um, is that the city piece of property? I haven't looked at your bills.
I'm not, I don't know. If you have any questions, you can probably check with Councilman Burmaster and your colleague, Councilman Beatrice, if you have any questions right now.
All right, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. That's 13 and 14. Our next, okay, first off, is everybody okay to waive the Thursday rule from the remaining legislation?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
Good at the job.
Yeah. Well, I won't discuss it if we're not even going to waive it from here, so. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Beatrice. Councilman Beatrice, this is a paper street legislation that you worked on with our attorney, Judge Guermont. Would you like to give us a summary on how you're proceeding?
We need to decertify this street because it's a street, it's a paper street. Back in the day, this Deerfield Drive west was gonna be continued over the Trent Road. In the meantime, it's between two houses on Dudley Ave, I mean, on Dawes Ave. And back in the knowledge where they built the Skyway Gardens, so it's just a lot. And there's a couple of people that are interested in purchasing the lot. And this has to go to an auction, but it has to be decertified first. So we're gonna decertify it. We're gonna go to engineering, they're gonna make it a lot, and then it'll go from there wherever it's at.
Maybe we have another piece of taxable property then?
Yes.
Hmm. Equalization rate maybe go down a little bit then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little side joke, guys, a little side joke. Okay. Any additional discussions on that legislation? Okay, let's close that one. Let's go to number 16. Temporary moratorium for convenience stores. We have two pieces of legislation here, one for 90 days and the following one is open. Do we have any recommendations from our corporate counsel on this legislation for time and date?
I think, as I've already said, you're really pushing the time that this moratorium has been in place. My recommendation would be, not 90 days, would be to 60, and that would just be to allow you time to get planning board and then to get your public hearing done. And I know just due to the holiday that that may be tough, the two holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas. But if you choose to do the 90 days, my recommend, I will not support, you know, any further moratoriums beyond the 90 days. So you really need to have what you want done, done within that, in that timeframe.
So colleagues-
How many meetings is the planning board gonna have? Two within that timeframe?
In this timeframe, the planning board meeting for this month will be tomorrow, so that's gonna be tight. I don't have, I can't get this, whatever's in this packet on the agenda for tomorrow, but there will be a December meeting. If I have stuff in advance, and there is a lot, I can see if they'll call a special meeting in that time, you know, to get it on before, either before the Christmas holiday or, you know, right when we come back before your next meeting. Although I know that you will also need to call a public hearing as well and hold that public hearing on whatever the planning board recommends, so.
Can I have the floor, please?
Samantha, do you have the floor?
So I think that this legislation's already, it's already done. I think that we plan on calling for the public hearing at our next council meeting. The planning board meeting is tomorrow. They can give a recommendation from tomorrow until our next council meeting, which is the 7th.
We already published the agenda. I can't add it to the agenda.
But you can disperse it to them so that they can look over it before the December meeting?
Could you waive the Wednesday rule?
It has to be advertised, as she's trying to tell you, that's all.
Right, that's what the public hearing is. I get that, for us anyways. So we can call one for the December meeting. They'll have to, they'll have to just call a special meeting.
If we pass it tonight, if we pass-
Yeah, right. They'll have to call for a special meeting. I mean, that's what the board's designed for. Unfortunately, this is additional work that they're, that they're gonna have to look at in order for this to get done in a timely manner.
I mean, I can't guarantee, I can ask that they'll call a special meeting, but I'm-
Well, I know, knowing that we're in a time strait, you know, with the last 90-day push for a moratorium, I would, I would hope that they would be willing to, you know, look this legislation over.
And the only thing I would note is that there would need to be some, because there's no resolution here, just a resolution from the floor if that were gonna be the case. So I have some authorization that I can send it to Planning Board.
Well, I think we gotta go on, vote on each piece separately. The first piece that we're talking about would be the, how about this? I know you don't want to go any further than 90 days. Do I have my colleague's word that after 90 days, we're gonna do the best we could to accomplish what we need to change within the convenience store?
Before the 90- Before the 90 days.
Before the 90 days.
Because 60 is not long enough.
It's not long-
I'm kind of confused on one thing, but you made a statement on-
Did you speak into the microphone, Mr. Beatrice?
Go ahead, Councilman Beatrice?
You, you made a statement that you will not support it after 90 days. He's, wait, just wait, though. But, so if we do 60 days, and we went, we did 60 and then went again, that would be 120. Why would you-
I'm saying if you, if you, I'm saying a total of 90 days. So if you said, we just wanna do it for 30, we just wanna do it for 60, we wanna do it for 45.
She's good for 60.
Yeah, but why wouldn't you be good for 90? That's what I'm asking.
I'm just saying, I said this at the last meeting in August, that you guys are really pushing that-
Constitutionally, right law.
Constitutionally, how long this moratorium has been in place, and they're not-
Right, but we never did the work that councilperson Colosmo Testa's done the last couple of weeks. I think we're ready to go with it now, so I think the 90 would be safe.
Yeah, I agree.
You know what I'm saying? Why would we do 60 and then do-
And I think we should work towards getting it done within the 60.
Yeah, we didn't do any-
And we could always-
Excuse me, we didn't do anything.
It's just a safety net.
Still got the floor, President?
We, we didn't do, we kept renewing it, renewing it, and we didn't do any work like she put into the last month.
And I, and that's totally fine, and like I said, I'm, I'm fine, my recommendation would be 60 days, but if you push it out the 90 days-
Well, explain to me why it would be 60 instead of 90, when you can see you got 30-day safety gap? That's all I'm asking.
Like I said, because the more you push this out, I mean, you're really-
I hope we're gonna push it out now. We have everything done, for the most part.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is that we've been, I mean, that's been what I've been hearing for the last, you know, six months, so.
I'm confused, so we're not getting it done, and we could have 90 days, and you want 60? I just don't know.
It's ultimately up to you. My recommendation was 60 days.
Okay.
So if you choose to do 90, if you choose to do more than that, I'm just saying, I'm not really-
Samantha, are you sup-
Recommending that.
Councilman Beatrice, hold on. I'll give her the floor when you're done.
No, I'm just gonna, oh, okay.
Okay, you all set? Councilman Frankie DeBrenge, you have the floor?
No, I'm good.
You all set?
May I have the floor?
Yes.
Okay. I think if we do the 90 days, once we get all this done, we just rescind the, rescind the moratorium once this is complete, before the 90 days.
That would be-
And that's, that's why I said, that's why I said 90, because now that I know that it's not gonna be to the planning board tomorrow, which, okay, maybe I was, I thought, I don't know, it could have been, which obviously doesn't give them enough time, but I guess it's, I mean, this is a little self-explanatory. I think that everybody knows that we've been trying to amend the convenience store legislation with that said. However, I think with the 90 days, if we can even get it done, maybe in the December meeting, the December 21st meeting, pass this, we could also rescind the 90-day moratorium that night.
We're hoping. Councilwoman Celeste Friend?
I just wanna say that I'm, I'm supporting, I'm supporting Sam on this. I think we need the 90 days. I think we may not need the 90 days, but let's give ourselves the 90 days. Let's not put ourselves in a position where we have to have some kind of special meeting in order to work within that 60 days. And like she says, we can immediately rescind this resolution as soon as we take care of everything. So I'm supporting the 90-day version.
Okay. So there's majority support for the 90 days. Let's discard number 17, and we don't have to worry about it, and we'll support number 16.
Okay. That's full council.
Okay, true.
Yeah, full council.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Absolutely. All right.
So that would resume number 16, and we're to start at number 7. We're apt?
Yep. All the, let me skip the rest and we'll get to the zoning board.
Yeah, do you wanna just do yours intersections and then I'll go through mine? That way I can explain it all?
I like to skip down to, let's see.
Your 30 to 33.
Yeah. Council members don't mind, let's start on number 30. Okay. I had a couple of calls from neighbors that live on this intersection, and they requested the stop sign. We do have a traffic light there now. We're going to try this. It's, she said that there's many people who run the light. I'm hoping that they don't run the stop sign, but in addition to that, there were a lot of vehicular confrontations on that intersection. So I called our deputy chief, and he recommended to give it a shot for a while and see what happens. We will continue the light blinking there, but it would be stopped on all sides, and we'll see what happens with it. Any, any discussions?
Sure, may I have the floor on this really quick? So I would actually like to co-sponsor this legislation with you. One of the residents that lives on Tilden Ave, or South Street, had brought it to my attention, because you just have the stop signs going north and south, and people are just not paying attention, you know, flying, so they're going off of Culver and just flying down South Street where that intersection actually is. I thought that they were going to do, um-
This is south in Tilden.
I know, I was thinking-
Where the traffic light is.
I know, but that's what I'm thinking. It's, I'm confused now.
That's what she suggested.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't south in Tilden, it was south in Ontario, because there's an actual traffic light. Where Sammy Simon's house is, that's Tilden.
This is something different. She didn't say Ontario, she said Tilden.
But there's a stoplight at Tilden.
There's, yes, the four-way stop. There's, there's not a four-way stop.
There's a stoplight.
There's a light, a signal light, yes.
No, it's, it's a four-way light.
Mm-mm.
On Tilden and-
On Tilden and South, right now?
Yes.
There's a regular operating traffic light, yes. I concur.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. Why are we adding stop signs when there's already a traffic light?
Like I said, there was many vehicular confrontations there. It was suggested by them to have a four-way stop to try it for a while and see what happens.
So they're taking down the traffic light?
No, the light's staying there. The light's staying there, we're just, we're changing the light to red on all sides, so people know to stop at the intersection.
So we're flashing yellow.
But there isn't a flashing yellow on Tilden and South.
That's, that's correct. There is not a flashing yellow. It's a regular traffic light.
It's a regular traffic light.
That's correct.
So that's what I'm saying, so why are you-
She wants to try it, and, and, and our deputy chief would like to try it and see if it helps to cut down the vehicular confrontations in that section.
So it'll be double?
Wait, why would you put a stop sign where a traffic light is, though? That's what I'm saying.
I believe, if I can just comment-
Please.
I believe, I don't know this, but it is an area I drive somewhat frequently.
Uh-huh.
I think it is because there's not high-volume traffic.
Okay.
So a lot of times, there are people who run that-
Light.
Light.
Okay.
When they're not supposed to. So having the, I think, having the stop sign would prohibit, people would be stopping and going and not having to wait for the full-
The light.
Light. I think, I don't know that I'm just-
Time out. We'll give it a shot. Time out. So you're putting, so if there's a red light and somebody has the green to go, now they now have to stop at a green light?
No, there's, it's kind of like-
Four-way stop, see? Tilden, I gotta look this up. Tilden and South Street.
It's gonna be the dual purpose, the stop signs and a four-way flashing red.
Right.
That should alert the driver.
They should tell them to stop and be careful, that's all.
Try it, listen.
We're gonna try it for 60.
We're good at trials. We know we can do trials.
It's not a flashing light, it's a traffic light. So is it-
We're gonna make it a flash.
Yes. Flashing red at all sides. Yes.
So instead of going red, green, we're gonna make it a flashing red.
Right. Yes, that they have to stop at that intersection. Correct. Any questions, Samantha? No, yeah, that's, okay. Absolutely, Councilor. First, Councilman Burmaster had a question? Yeah.
I've got on York, I got a flashing red light three ways, and I got three stop signs. And, and I've been at the stop sign going north, at the light, and cars have passed me on my left to not stop for the intersections anyway. But I've already got what you're, you're looking to do here. I've got three lights, and I've got three stop signs, and it still doesn't matter.
Okay, so this is a four-way intersection, and there's already a traffic light there.
Right, they're gonna take that light down and put a four-
Right, that's all I'm saying.
They're just making it a flashing red instead of a regular green and red.
I, I-
Yeah.
Councilman-
I don't know, I just thought people would stop for a red light before a stop sign, that's a-
I would, I just wanna add one thing to this. So, I mean, we all know that, like, stop signs don't work very well, flashing red lights don't work very well. We need to, in general, as a city, look at, like, the best data and research out there about what they call traffic calming methods. So there's things that we can do that get people to slow down regardless of actually sort of legal enforcement and laws and stuff like that. So for instance, I'm just giving this as a for instance, we know from really good studies that when there's a lot of trees alongside the road, people will simply drive slower. It has to do with your perception about how fast you're going. So I would just, I would like to recommend in the long run that the city, that the city really look at various kinds of traffic calming methods. And in the meantime, we also wanna put stop signs, we really need stop signs, but-
In addition, there was a survey, police officers were there, and they were doing a survey.
Okay.
And they said that this would be a good suggestion to-
Then I'm all for it.
Help it.
I just wanna, can I make a comment?
Yes.
It's nothing to do with what we're talking. I know you had the signs on the parkway, the automated signs to slow down. Well, I was driving there this afternoon, and there was two or three cars in front of us, and let me tell you, it's, it worked. They hit those brakes and they slowed right down, so, so far-
That's good news, Councilman DeBrenge.
So good. And I know Councilman Beatrice is gonna put some up in North Utica. So maybe it'll kinda, you know, keep them aware that, you know, we are speeding here, let's, let's hit the brake, and it worked. Two cars in front of you just-
And we're working on the new ones with emojis. If you're speeding, it's a mean emoji.
Mmm, mad. Can we do, when somebody comes down on-
That was just off the record, but go ahead.
And somebody's doing good? Yeah, it's a very pretty happy face. All right, our next piece of legislation-
I just, I just wanna clarify.
This is a-
Councilman Miola?
Oh, go ahead.
That the light will be removed.
No, it won't be removed, Samantha. It would be, I already checked it with the light department-
At noon, it just told me that it's going to be removed.
He told you it was gonna be removed?
Yes, I asked, because I was just clarifying.
I'll discuss that with him.
I actually had the similar legislation to add a stop sign going west to east on Ontario because people were going so fast, and that's why I was confused. I wanted to just make sure that they were two separate items that we were talking about. So he did say that they were gonna recommend to remove the light, just for clarification.
I'll discuss that with him for temporary for a red light, so get people warmed up to stop, and if, if, if everything works good with, after the 60 days, we'll remove the light. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's it. Okay. We'll get back to 34 because it's calling for public hearing. All right, let's go back to, oh, wait a minute.
Well, we got 31.
Yes. What's 31?
31 through 33.
No, 31, 31, 30 to 33 is, uh-
Oh, that one?
Yeah, they want the one for each corner. Okay. Let's go back to the beginning of the zoning. Yes. Now, it's up to-
What about 34?
We gotta, that's, that's-
We got, we got, that's calling for public hearing. All right, we're on number 18.
Do you have a?
Did any of our corporate counsel have the opportunity to look at this legislation? Corporate counsel or judge? Anybody look at the legislation that's proposed?
I will have to look at every piece of legislation and every document. I'll have to review every single one.
Okay.
Not for any other reason other than to make sure I know exactly what we're talking about. And I talked to Mr. Giorgio, I think it was yesterday, and I said, you'll see this, and whatever you wish to do is, you know, up to you. But I know, I expected the matter would not be adopted immediately because Mr. Giorgio hasn't seen it, have you?
No, I just received it this afternoon.
And I'm not going to speak for Mr. Giorgio.
Okay.
And I'm not going to speak for Mr. Giorgio, she can speak for herself, but I know that I will look at it as a councilwoman test. I asked me if, I read them all, I said, I was honest with her, I said, no I was not, I was rather ill yesterday. And I, but I will look at every single one probably on Monday. I'll come down here or maybe, what's today, maybe Friday. And I'll go through every one and I'll be prepared to say whatever I'm going to say.
You agreed with that corporate counsel?
Yeah, I just got it.
Again, I'm not speaking for, whatever you say, Mr. Giorgio.
I just got it a few minutes before the meeting, so I also haven't had a chance to look at it and obviously I haven't had a chance to speak with Judge either regarding the pieces as well.
Okay. So, we don't, we don't know if this legislation is in legal form, if it's in conflict, or if it's self-explanatory for direction, so. But I want to make sure that the council gets their intent to the paper, that's what I'm looking for. We've got some time, if the council doesn't mind, I'd like to see if we can get a few pieces of legislation, at least the intent, and then have both our corporate counsel and our judge get that intent written properly so we can have a public hearing for these pieces of legislation. Is that okay, my colleagues?
Can I, can I just hit the floor? Quick. We could never pass this legislation tonight, ever.
I understand that.
So, I mean, it's still going to go through a public hearing.
Because we're in dire straits of time right now Samantha, I'd like to see if we can get as much, as many pieces done as possible.
Sure, okay.
Because this is like out of normal process, if the council doesn't mind, I'd like to utilize this, for example, for committee of the whole, so. There's no problem?
No problem.
I, I think that's fine. I'd like us to go ahead and schedule a committee of the whole as soon as possible.
Well, whatever we don't have after, of course, whatever we can accomplish, we can accomplish, and whatever we can't, every piece is going to go into committee anyway.
No, I understand that.
But I want, I want to make sure that corporate counsel knows the intent of the legislation that we want to put on paper so they can get it to the proper direction.
I'm, I'm fine with that. All, all I'm asking is that if we do put this into committee of the whole, which I think is what we obviously should do, we weren't, no one was expecting to pass it tonight, that we go ahead and immediately schedule a committee of the whole to deal with just all these packets.
Because then they still need time to write. I'm just trying to get as many pieces that we could, the intent down properly. We've got half an hour, would you like to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
If I could just comment, I'm going to be, I'm going to have to leave, I have somewhere else I have to be.
I understand.
But I just wanted to indicate, Sam, I just skimmed it. There's a couple things, and regardless of substance, because that's not what I was looking for, there's a couple things that are just not in proper form, and I would defer to Judge too. Just because when you do stuff with the zoning and the use table, when you send it to the publisher, a lot of times they don't know what you're talking about, so unless it's really explicitly written...
Oh, I think we can just attach the addendum, and we talked, we talked about that to that.
But, so those are, those are going to be my comments, but as Frank said, if you make it clear what you're looking to do, from some of what I could just skim, I wasn't exactly sure just by reading it. So if that could be clear for both me and Judge when we look at it, that would be helpful. And then again, they will need to be rewritten so they're in proper, proper form for the publisher going forward, so.
Yeah, and this is very similar to the way that the legislation was written for the 2,000 square foot amendment to the neighborhood retail. So we followed that same format from that, that legislation that was passed, so.
Yes, some of them is just the use table, it's just not...
Yep, and we could just, we could just add the picture to it, no problem at all.
Alright, thank you very much Stephanie. I'd like to start, go ahead.
Just one comment. If, I know the judge says maybe by Friday or Monday, so if they do have, if they completed their detail and they went through whatever changes that, you know, are necessary...
We can amend it on the floor and vote on it.
Then, if the clerk can notify me, then I will call a special committee meeting or whatever at that time. So let, let them get their work done and then we'll call a meeting prior to our, our regular meeting if we have to.
Alright, I just, go ahead Judge, go ahead.
As I sit here thinking about this, Mr. Giorgio and I have met together on a number of occasions when we had multiplicity legislation before us and see if she and I could have a meeting of the minds. And I think that in this instance, I said like, I was, I'd come Friday, I am going to request that Mr. Giorgio and I meet together. We'll look it over together, we'll read it together, and I will know what her objections are and she will know what, if I have any, and we'll work it out that way. I think that's the only fair way to Mr. Giorgio and to me.
That's correct, Your Honor.
Do you agree, Mr. Giorgio?
But I would agree.
We'll make time to meet together, okay?
That's correct. Excellent.
That's my request to the council.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I, and I'm pretty sure that my colleagues would approve that 100%. But what I'm looking for is the intent, and I want to add the intent to each piece of legislation so both you and our corporate counsel Stephanie DiGiorgio knows the intent. It may not be written in that intent, in that way, but I just want the coun, I want you to know the intent of the council for that piece of legislation, so then you can write it properly. Okay?
I am.
Correct, absolutely. Alright, let's start with number 18, if everybody's good. It says very clearly zoning code amend from neighborhood retail cert, certificate, certificate to neighborhood retail certificate and neighborhood convenience store use. Samantha, can you give me the intent?
Well Frank, we, we had a wonderful two-hour meeting and it's, it was...
But Samantha, I need this in writing so I can help them.
I, I am, and I'm explaining it. So I want to just say collectively, this is what we agreed on together at the last meeting moving forward and why the legislation was written like this, okay? So if you don't mind, I would like to go through each of these pieces and explain what that is, and then we can go back from start to finish and figure out where we got to go from there, okay?
For each piece to be introduced and right into legislative form, just give me the intent of each piece.
Okay.
Alright, so let's start with number 18.
So let me ask you a question. Why didn't you write the intent for the 2,000 square foot rule?
It's not that, we just want to make sure it's written properly, so...
So then let me, let me explain it, that's what I'm asking you to do then, okay? So, for this one specifically, what we, what we amended was the, the chapter 2-14, license permits and miscellaneous business regulations. So what, what you had done was with the 2,000 square foot rules, you added it to neighborhood retail establish, establishment. So what we did was, we added neighborhood convenience store use to that license permits and miscellaneous business regulations, part of that.
So you don't want slash, you want and in there. See, that's one of, that's one of the things to clarify. You know what I'm trying to say to you? So you just said you want them both together.
It could be and/or.
Okay.
Or slash.
Very good, we could put and/or. So now, at least, at least my corporate counsel might, and the judge knows what your intent, it has to be clear Samantha, it has to be clear. So, alright, so you want to change neighborhood...
So a slash is not, is really what we're, we're talking about right now?
We don't know if they're coming back, in the court of law Samantha, you want to make it simple and easy as possible for our clerk and everybody to defend it.
Okay, I will approve an amendment to say and instead of slash.
Or or.
And or.
And or. Okay, thank you very much for that. So now that you know the intent, this is for adding to neighborhood retail cer, cert, cert, I can't even say that.
Certificate.
Certificate. Neighborhood, neighborhood convenience store use. Is everybody okay with doing that addition? Is there any other discussions? Now, of course, our, we'd like to know what ramifications in our code would be the changes, okay? We, we would like that information back from our attorneys also, so the council has a complete picture of what happens if we do change this within our code, okay? Alright, that's, that one's completed. Our next piece is number 19. Retail stores 6,000 feet, this is, this is the square footage one. Go ahead Samantha, want to help us out with that one also?
So basically, the neighborhood retail legislation that was in there really, it was, it needed to be separated. And I had talked to Marcus and even Derek Crossman's recommendation about putting convenience stores in its own specific definition. So what I did was, is I went and looked back at the definition that we used to have for neighborhood convenience stores, and that was actually the wording for it, and replay, and added that definition to the, to that license permits and miscellaneous business regulations. So that's basically just defines what a neighborhood convenience store is.
So you, you're defining it more specifically as a recommendation from our, our codes officer, is that correct?
No, yeah, I mean, something that we all go on.
Okay, there's any questions? I think, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any issues, but again, same scenario, Judge, we need...
You know, we have one person missing in all this. The statute of zoning clearly says that the definition of everything is in the...
Hands of our commissioner, Economic Development Commissioner.
Of the commissioner's hands, to some degree. And I think that the commissioner, which is Mr. Giorgio's client, I think he has to review all this with you first. And I, I think, or maybe he's got to be at our meeting, because these are all definitions that they put in there. We have been reviewing the zoning ordinance, and what I think rightfully, since it was adopted. It's never a perfect document, and definitions has always been a problem, been a problem for me, I've amended some of them. But I, I, I feel that we are left out when the commissioner doesn't participate, because he has to participate. And, and I think that Mr. Giorgio will have to arrange that.
Derek, could you, can you get...
You can be with him separately and see how he feels about it, then you and I can meet, whatever which way you want to do it is okay with me.
I would give...
I am up, I am at your service.
Yes, can we notify Brian?
Derek is here, so he's going to take some notes so that, you know, it's clear.
We know the intent of what the council's looking for.
And then I'll, with Judge, we'll prepare a meeting to go over everything.
Right, we just want to know what ramifications or what, you know, so the council knows a complete picture on these amendments, okay? Of course, Brian has his pluses and minuses, I just want my colleagues to know every point, alright? Alright, so we got number 19 completed. Thank you very much Stephanie for staying longer. And you're more than welcome to join us at our next committee meeting as well, too.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not sure if this is a typo, 20, is 20 the same as 19, or...
Nope. Nope, it's not a typo. That was, that was to our code of ordinances, this is amending our zoning code. Two separate pieces.
So this one's outside, okay. Well, I don't know if number 20 is actually needed, if the...
It is needed Frank.
Who told you this Samantha?
Frank, because it's the code of ordinances, which is the permits use, okay? That's section 2-14, okay?
Alright, we'll check, we'll check if it's...
Now, the zoning code, okay, is section 2-29, dash...
229-7.
Dash, definitions.
I understand, I understand.
Can I have the floor just for a second? As I understand it, it's simply that these definitions exist in two places in the zoning ordinance, that we have to amend it in both places, as simple as that, right?
That's it, that's it, that's all it is.
We discussed all of this.
Yes, we did, we did.
Okay, and, and the, and the, and the judge, okay, so I was going to think if it was in one section, might put in two sections, delete, nevermind, okay, no problem. We can do it.
Frank, because there are two different parts of the code.
That's fine, I don't know if it's needed, but okay.
It's needed.
Okay, our next piece is another definition, the zoning amending, eliminating the word convenience in the definition to read gas stations. Can you help us out with that one?
I wish you were at this meeting last week, because we all collectively understood it, but I'll, I'll explain it to...
Councilman Burmaster wasn't there either Samantha, can you help us out, please?
I'll re-explain it, yep. So we just took out convenience from gas stations.
We just took out...
It was, it was actually, you know what it was in the zoning code? Gas stations slash convenience stores.
So, if there's, if there's a gas station...
It wasn't gas stations and convenience stores, it was gas stations slash and or, and or.
So there's a question I got on this one, there's a lot of convenience stores with gas stations.
Not, not without gas pumps. So gas stations will be its own definition with gas pumps.
Every place with a gas station, whether or not it has a convenience store as well, will be regulated as gas stations.
Correct.
Full stop.
So, but it doesn't, it's not reading that way. If you're, if you, if you want it to state that way, of course, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I didn't have anything to say.
Oh, just hit your hand up.
No, I was drinking my coffee.
Um, then it has to read, see, what you want, what you want to accomplish is not really what's in here. So what we need to do is state that convenience stores are gas stations on what zoning area.
We're getting there Frank, we're getting there.
Okay.
Right, so what they're saying, I think, to clarify from the last meeting, they don't want to make a distinction between a gas station and a gas station with a convenience store. That's all a gas station.
Right.
Right. Every time any location has a gas station, it is regulated as a gas station.
Because of MA, that's the primary use of the site, is the gas station.
Yeah. Stewards would agree with that.
So it's like the mom and pop gas station on the corner of Mohawk and Rucker, you got the one on, on Genesee Street and Clinton Place, I think. Those are the mom and pop gas stations, but they really don't have food in there, it's just gas, they might have some, you know, chips and soda or whatever, that's it, but nothing like milk, eggs, products like that.
Right, speed bags, speedway on Genesee.
Same kind of...
Yeah.
And the recognition of that, just so I can get done, is, so if one of the repercussions is that, say, if they don't follow the law, you can discontinue their service as a store, if you shut down a place with gas pumps and potential environmental contaminants, that's a lot different process than just shutting down a store that sells chips. So, they're making that distinction.
Yeah, like Mike, as I was talking to the San, you know, it was, you know, a smoke shop, so we're getting into it with smoke shops and then with legalization, you never know if it happened. But, you know, to beat, to beat the code, they can just start having eggs, milk and bread in a cooler right there, the vape shop and the smoke shop, and say, well, we're a convenience store too now.
Well, but there's, there's a definition of smoke shop and they need a license.
Exactly, but I mean, when they start selling milk, eggs and...
Then they're a convenience store and they need a license. Unless they're bigger than 6,000 square feet. Anything that's 6,000 square feet is a different category.
So we just got to protect, I toy on this protect there.
Yeah, but the convenience store and the smoke shop enforcement and licensing process are very similar, as far as a city perspective. It would be different for, say, ATF who does alcohol, tobacco, but from the city perspective, as a codes officer, my codes officers don't see any real distinction between a convenience store and a smoke shop and how they do their jobs.
Alright, are you ready? So, um, this is outside, this is outside, so this doesn't need the planning board's permission, so. No, it does.
This is going to be a big problem.
Yeah.
Because I go to the gas station on the corner of Albany and they sell motor oil in there, do they not?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
And they sell tobacco in there, do they not?
Yep.
And they're a convenience store and a gas station.
They're a gas station.
So I, I think there were Mr. Giorgio and I who are a little more attuned about the vagueness and whether something is enforceable, are going to have some problems with all of this. I mean, one of the problems, I always said over and over, is that we rush into things like it's got to be done tomorrow. I don't know that, that she and I and the commissioner are going to come to the meeting of the minds on this. I mean, my job as Mr. Represent you, not them, and it's Mr. Giorgio's job to represent them, not me or you. And we may be clashing about ideas and then, and I've said, I said this at the last meeting, definitions are confusing on everything we've done on this, on the two different statutes, one's in ordinance, it's in the code of ordinance, the other one's in the zoning law. And they're sort of overlapping, you understand that, the bangle, and, and that's causing me difficulty, because if you go into those stores, you see all the things that they, they sell and they're so inter, interming, intermingled. And so the, the idea is when you draw something, it is not vague and confusing if it's challenged. So, all I'm telling you is that Mr. Giorgio and I are going to have to look at this and we're going to have to look at it, and it's going to take us a little bit, it may take us a day or two. And I think that Mr. Thomas and even Mr. Phillips may have to be involved in this. Mr. Phillips is, really has a lot of knowledge about this.
I just want to do it right, so it's got enforcement.
I think he has a little conflicts about what we do too, do you not, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I mean, there was, it was, it was meant to clear it up, because there's too many, the idea behind this whole thing is consolidation.
There's a sense of doing this and we can't enforce it.
Well, that's why you have lawyers.
Yeah.
And, and, and we will...
Don't push that.
I commend Ms. Testin. Obviously, she did a lot of work on this. I don't want her to think that her work is done in vain and we're not going to give it a good look, but at least we want the final product to be what you understand. You know, lawyers are different. What you understand is the common person, the guy who wants to open one of these stores, and he wants to know what you think we, they are too. So, I'm just saying to you, be patient with us. The lawyers, we, we take, take a very close look at things, and if they, jargon has to be manipulated to make Mr. Thomas happy and Mr. Phillips happy and make you happy, we will do it. At least maybe we'll have a better document or documents than we have now.
Correct.
And that's all I can promise you, and I think that's all you can say.
Thank you, Your Honor. Celeste, Ron, you got the floor?
All I want to say is, I think that saying that any establishment which sells gasoline is a gasoline station and shall be regulated as a gasoline station is actually clearer than talking about whether a gasoline station is a gasoline station alone or a gasoline slash and/or convenience store. I, I think that this actually clarifies it a great, if you sell gasoline, you're a gasoline station. Maybe you're like the kind that Mr. Williamson, you know, referred to, that just sells soda and chips, maybe you're a big one, like a Cliffs that sells a lot of other stuff. If you're gasoline, if you sell gasoline, you're a gasoline station, full stop. I, I think that that's a clearer, more straightforward way to go.
Correct, convenience stores...
Is there any definition for gas stations within?
Yes, there is.
And there's over so, so much gallon you're supposed to sell to, to be a gas station? Or I could sell one gallon and call myself a gas station, what's up?
You've got gas pumps, you're getting hit by gas, everything else, I mean, you're going to have oversight. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, um, I don't, I didn't memorize the definition, so I don't know what definitions in the zoning, but the way we enforce it, just so you know, is by a gas pump.
Right.
Right? If you're pumping gas out of the ground, you're a gas station. Now, if somebody has oil in their store, that's not the same as having a gas pump.
Yeah, I would just like to say that if somebody's out there selling one gasoline at a time out of their store, I'd like to know about that, I'd like to know now, I'd like to temporarily suspend this meeting so we can get out there and do something about that.
It does separate the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely we will.
Alright, our next piece is number 23, and it's zoning code, neighborhood retail leaving the district row blank by removing P slash SP from the row. Can you help us out with that one?
Where are you?
Number 23.
23.
What happened to 22?
We're okay with 22. It's not a definition, isn't it? Yes.
No.
It's a use table.
It's a use table, yes. There's no problem, I understand what you want to do with that one.
What?
We're on 23 now.
But Bob Burmaster wasn't here, you don't want the explanation for 22?
We, we just got done explaining gas stations and the difference, we just, we did it.
No, this is not even close to being the same thing.
We're talking about 22.
So 22 is what we're doing, is we're adding neighborhood convenience store section to the use table, so that section would be added to the C, C, section C commercial with leaving the use table blank. And, and the definition, actually in the glossary of the zoning code, is blank.
I like to move it to industrial, but, okay.
It's, it's, well, it is, it's, that's what it's labeled under, neighborhood retail, convenience store, smoke shop, they're all in commercial.
Okay. Use, 23 is use of commercial, okay?
So this was what the neighborhood retail, again, we had discussed it with codes, leaving that row blank by removing P, S, P, S from the row, which is permit, special permit, or site plan review.
Okay.
Leaving that row blank. And the only thing, the only recommendation that I would add is just putting the, the, the use table, actually, in there, what we talked about. That way, they could see what the actual use table looks like, okay?
Okay. We're on twenty-four, yes.
Uh, this one is the same thing of the zoning code. It's, um, uh, section C commercial, smoke shop, leaving the district row blank by removing P, S P, S from the row, uh, to be left blank. And again, in the definition, um, in the glossary, um, blank is the terminology that they use for, um, for you, for, for explaining the district row.
But again, have your picture of it in there, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, just so that, you know, it's kind of dry, it's not that big of a deal.
Um, okay, um, okay, smoke shop adjusted, okay. Um, let's see, we're on twenty-five. Uh, automotive, removing convenience stores. Go ahead, Councilman Brando.
Could you explain why we're removing S, S P, and S?
Sure, I, I was just actually gonna get.
I don't think Bob was here.
I just wanna get through those two, and then I'll explain, 'cause we got one more after that. Uh, the next one is, uh, the use table, D, automotive, um, just removing the word convenience from the term gasoline convenience store and amending it to say gasoline station.
Okay. All right, uh, so you, you're trying to separate, and you continue to try to separate throughout the?
We're removing convenience.
Away from gas stations.
Away from gas stations, yes.
So every time you look, you saw it, you're trying to separate it, correct?
Removing convenience, yep.
Our next piece is number twenty-six, and removing S P from N M U district, help me out.
Uh, removing special permit from the neighborhood mixed-use district and leaving it blank.
Derek, you got that?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, continue to make them separate.
So we just talked about it, um, neighborhood mixed-use is a, is a, is a term that we're now seeing. Um, what this does is by removing S P, it's just giving the zoning board, um, one extra step, um, in reviewing, um, any automotive use for that, um.
For convenience stores?
No, for gas stations.
Automotive use for gas stations, okay. So in other words, gas pumps in automotive repair facilities out of the question, or we?
Nope, just, just, just removing the special permit. And leaving it blank, so that it's gonna go in front of the zoning board.
Okay. Again, please give, uh, talk to Brian about this, Derek, and the council needs to know every, you know, part, both positive and negative with each proposal, okay?
And you were at our meeting too, so you can understand what, what we're talking about too, in order to explain it to Brian, right?
I do.
Okay, all right.
Our next piece is number twenty-seven. After the public hearing, the majority vote of the members of the common council should require a chapter except described protest petition process. Okay, what is this now?
So this one is eliminating the planning board, um, from the process, and just holding a public hearing, um, for any amendment that needed to be, um, done to the actual zoning code.
So you want to remove the public hearings input?
Nope.
Now you wanna remove the?
Planning board's.
Planning board's.
Recommendation.
You don't wanna have more input?
No, they can come to our public hearing, Frank, it's a long process. It's, it's, it's the council that makes the amendment to the zoning code. If the, if the zoning board or planning board or scenic historic wants to come to the public hearing, they will be notified, it's their right to come.
Okay. Next one's twenty-eight. Removing the word convenience stores from section D in automotive use and section D, section one. Okay, I'm lost on that one, go ahead.
So we're just removing convenience from gas stations?
From section, the whole section D, or?
Nope, it's, it's gonna be removing just the word convenience, so the section reads its fouls. Gasoline stations, not slash convenience stores anymore, shall be subject to the following requirements. In subsection one, when get, when a gasoline station is located adjacent to a residential, uh, use, it shall be shielded by wall, fencing, or any other. So it's just removing the word convenience, so that it's gas station only.
So we wanna, you want, do you wanna im- implement the word gas station in there?
Nope, it's already there, I'm just removing the word convenience.
Okay. Derek, you got that one?
I do.
Next one's number twenty-nine. Uh, this is neighborhood stores, zoning fouls, two hundred linear feet, we already have this, and we're voting on this tonight, is there any difference?
No, there is, because we're now adding it neighborhood convenience store, it's no longer neighborhood retail.
So after we get done with the two hundred feet, we can vote, include this after, okay?
No, no, it has nothing to do with that. Your amendment went to neighborhood retail, okay? We are now separating neighborhood retail with neighborhood convenience store, which would also include that two thousand square feet.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Vote on this tonight?
No, we can vote on none, we have to vote for the planning board.
We can vote on the one in committee though, tonight, the two thousand foot one tonight. Because I already went to the planning board and everything.
I kinda wanna a recommendation from Brian Thomas though, and the judge, and Stephanie Giorgio and everybody else, with it's an intent.
Oh, that's fine, oh, that's fine. We already had the public hearing, so we can vote on it any time after that, that's fine. We can leave in committee, that's fine. Okay, we'll get the recommendations, and we'll go from there. And the next piece is, I think, calling for the public hearing for all those pieces, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's number thirty-four.
Oh, so thirty-four is calling for the public hearing?
Right.
Thirty-five was because the zoning code was actually passed, um, without any sections, to supplemental regulations. So if I go look in the zoning code, and I go to Article eleven supplemental regulations, there are no sections added, added to that part of the code. So it, although it's in E code, E code actually numbered them for us, um, we just, it's gotta be amended on the actual index that that's what section you're referring to.
Derek, just make sure there's no duplication anywhere else in our code, right, with those numbers?
No, there's not, and it's already in there under E code.
Mr. Chairman, oh, one sec.
Councilman?
We are gonna call a vote on the thirty-four?
No.
Without, okay, we're not, we're not.
Everything's going in committee, until they look at it, yep.
Fantastic. Be confirmed by the attorney, Derek.
Okay. On December seventh, and if anything changes, 'cause we can have a committee of the whole meeting, whatever recommendation that they have for that.
I, I think we should do that, so we don't, again, so that we don't put ourselves in the disposition where we run up against those ninety days.
Right.
So I would like us to go ahead and vote on number thirty-four. Right, right. I think we should vote on number thirty-four. It's just a call for a public hearing.
Councilman? Refer to attorney, go ahead.
Public hearing should be on, uh, something that, uh, is. Well, it's something that you have, uh, that is a fi, has finality to it, and this is what you're thinking, adopting. Do you really believe we're gonna be ready for a public hearing on that date? That, that we're gonna have all the discussions and the, all these particular ordinances finished at that time? Now you're putting an awful burden on Mr. Giorgio and myself, uh, when we go through all of this.
And you can't call a public hearing on a piece that maybe not, or maybe if we combine two pieces together to make the same issue. So why don't we wait till we talk for the public hearing on our next meeting?
I say call for, I say call for the public hearing, because what if no, nothing changes?
Well, if you have a public hearing and nothing that you've changed?
Right.
Then there's, then you can have a public hearing.
Right.
And if after Mr. Giorgio and I, and maybe Mr. Thomas, we meet, and we have a lot of different changes, have changed all these ordinances, that's what you really, uh, the public should know is really, you're gonna vote on, or you think you may vote on, you may not get five votes, you may, may get.
The worst that happens is if we schedule a public hearing and then we cancel it.
Final form.
Yes.
You know, you have to understand too, that you, as council persons, are gonna have to get a copy of both of these documents, and I think that before you vote on, you're gonna have to examine these things, so that you know that you're changing.
Right, I do believe you should have it in final form.
Too.
Right. I'm pretty confident.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm, I'm not raising objections, I'm just stating the, well, what, what I think it is.
Yeah, because it's in our zoning law, and it's overseen by the state.
Russian, for the state.
I do believe that it has to be done properly.
It's a big task.
I gotta be honest with you, I'm pretty confident, I've been writing led, my own legislation for nine years, okay? That this piece is well thought out and well, well put together. It took me quite a bit of time, and not saying that I don't disagree with any recommendations from Mr. Giorgio or Mr. Guaramo, but I can, I for, I'm very confident that this legislation was well written and well thought out before it was presented. And I've always written my own legislation, with all due respect.
Can I have the floor, can I have the floor for a moment?
Oh, hold on, one sec, go ahead.
I just, there's an interesting little tension here, if you, if you were listening, if, for anybody who's been listening to the whole meeting. No, we don't need ninety days, and let's put the public hearing off for quite a while. Like, we, you know, some of us argued for ninety days, because it can take a while to get these things done. And one of the reasons, and now people only wanted sixty days, but, but wanna put off the public, you know, I mean, we gave ourselves ninety days, let's, let's go ahead and schedule a public hearing. Worst thing that happens is that, um, we have to cancel it and reschedule one later.
Can I have the floor?
I'm done.
Yes, Council Beatrice, go ahead.
So, I just wanna clarify, I want you guys to clarify one thing for me. So if we call for this public hearing, we call for the public hearing, and the legislation that we put through is fine, we have the public hearing. If, when the, the two judges get together, and the legislation is not correct and it has to be changed, then obviously, we wouldn't have a public hearing on that piece, am I correct?
Joe, here's, here's the thing, and I, and I'm gonna clarify this.
Well, I'm just saying, no, wait, I have, I just wanna answer that.
Listen, I, I am using terminology that was in our zoning code prior to this, okay?
Okay.
I have gone through each section of the zoning code, okay? I'm actually fixing the zoning code that was passed by, and recommended by the attorneys and judges and everything else, that this document was passed, okay? Not in a proper form, in my opinion, okay? Because you also have sections that weren't even added into there for our zoning code. With that said, with that said, I am, I am one thousand and ten percent confident, if you take the politics out, that I'm the one that wrote this legislation, it is a thousand and ten percent correct in its proper form.
And I'm, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, what I'm asking is, if we call for the public hearing, okay? And everything is correct, we vote on it.
That's it.
If, out of thirty pages, if two pages are wrong, obviously, we don't have a public hearing on that, and we go on. So it's, it doesn't do anything, doesn't hurt us by calling for a public hearing.
No, not at all.
Okay, so let's call for a public hearing.
Because we could actually pass pieces of legislation that maybe aren't there, and get those pieces out of the way.
Right.
All right, if there's any issues, um, I think we can always move forward with the public hearing. And then if there's a piece that, I guess, is incorrect, we don't have the public hearing for it.
Right.
But if there's a piece that needs to be amended, of course, we'd have to republicize the public hearing again for another ten days. So is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll vote on, uh, number thirty-four then.
Okay.
The only thing I'm.
Councilman, uh, Pro Temp, do you mind if we have a five-minute break, or would you like to start immediately?
Five-minute break, the only, the only thing that I do have is that I'm actually gonna have to put the, pull these pieces out and bring them to the floor, because I wanna amend them on the floor, that the use table's already in there. That we gotta amend it to have the use table in there, okay? So I'm gonna. And the and or, not the slash. All right, thank you.
Motion to close.
One second, there's, there's other stuff in the committee.
Oh, wait a minute, oh, there's two pieces, I'm sorry, there's two pieces in committee in the hall. There's Miller Street, eleven twenty-two, and three thirteen James Street, are we good to move them for the sale?
We're gonna move them, right?
Okay. Yep, eleven twenty-two Miller Street and three thirteen James Street.
Four and six.
Yep, is everybody okay to move them out of, out of committee at all?
Yep.
Let's, motion to close. We have a five-minute break.
All right, good evening, everyone. Take down the, uh.
I wanna welcome everybody to the, uh, regular meeting. Today's date is November sixteen, two thousand twenty-two.
They said it's not, I was just.
All right, this meeting will come to the order of the city clerk, we'll call the roll.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo, Testa, Debrango.
All right, please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to dispense the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'd like to make that motion, please, Mr. President.
Motion by Friend, second by? Mark. All right, uh, let's see here. I want to, uh, make a motion to waive the rules of order for proposed ordinance number one, which is a proclamation for, uh, Patrick Johnson. Have a second, thank you.
All the people that work with Patrick can come up.
Okay, what we're gonna do is, uh, read this proclamation, and, uh, we have some members of the street team, uh, that would work with Patrick Johnson over the years, and, uh, I just wanna say, he was honored, uh, by naming the basketball court on Campbell Street after him, and, uh, tonight, I think it's, uh, well deserved that the common council does honor this man for what he has meant to our community and our city. So, here we go with the proclamation. A proclamation honoring the life and contributions of Patrick Johnson. Whereas on Saturday, October fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, a man who dedicated his life to the community passed away at age sixty. Patrick Johnson spent a great deal of his time talking to youths and other persons in the city about crime, drugs, and the paths to a better life. And whereas, he was an innovator and lecturer, who devised programs that were designed to lead young people away from violence and the poor choices that led to recidivism. He was determined to give the youth and people of Cornhill, of beloved Cornhill, a better life. And whereas, Patrick Johnson was the founder and executive director of Hoops and Dreams Basketball Tournaments for twenty years. The tournaments, tournaments focused primarily on Utica's youth to eliminate gun violence. Hoops and Dreams is a recognized throughout the city of Utica, bringing together all races, ethnicities, and ages. Encouraged by Roger Patterson, Patrick was the founder of the Street Team, a group of community volunteers that serve as security during basketball games, and dedicated to keeping peace in the community by serving as violence interrupters. Patrick was a community liaison between the Oneida County District Attorney's Office and the community. Serving as a director of the Save Our Streets program, and, and that program, Patrick, together with Roosevelt Patterson, worked tirelessly to reduce gun violence and other criminal activity among Utica's youth.
Whereas, in addition to all that, in two thousand eighteen, Patrick, Patrick Johnson and Freddie Hamilton became the co-founders of Rebuilding the Village Inc., a nonprofit, community-based organization whose mission is to eliminate generational poverty by serving at-risk children, youth and families in Cornhill and West Utica, and gun violence prevention. Whereas Patrick Johnson was famous for his race relations workshops that he conducted at the Utica Public Library and other venues throughout Moaw Valley that included law enforcement personnel and citizens from all walks of life to help to better understand and live peaceably together. Patrick also served on the Police Reform Committee in two thousand twenty, and was a Hamilton fellow, part, participate, participating in the Levitt forums. Now therefore be it resolved, there are not enough words to express the gratitude of the members of the common council for the city of Utica to Patrick L., uh, Patrick L. Johnson and his memory, and the sorrow felt by all those who know and love him. Be it therefore resolved, that this tribute will forever be a part of the minutes of a meeting of the Utica Common Council held on the sixteenth day of November, two thousand twenty. So we have a, we have, um,
a framed proclamation.
A framed proclamation for.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt.
I just wanna recognize my colleague, uh, Jerome McKenzie.
Thank you.
You guys wanna say one thing, you can go ahead and say it.
Wow. Oh, I'm sorry, wow, um, Patrick Johnson was an inspir, inspiration in my life. Um, I met Patrick Johnson in nineteen ninety-four. Me and Patrick Johnson met in Oneida County Jail. Uh, from nineteen ninety-four until two thousand and nine, we haven't seen each other. When we met in two thousand nine, I told him what my life was like, he told me what he was doing in his life. And he promised me that he would change my life, and I stand here as a witness, he has. Um, man, uh, to see the work that he has done, and to stand with him, and do the work with him, uh, is, is, I'm, I'm privileged and honored. I'm, I'm, I'm just lost for words right now. Such a great man, such a great lost tire community. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just intruding myself in here. I just wanted to say, uh, so proud, so happy for you. I would like for that dream to keep going on. And I wanna, I'm gonna designate somebody I know who can, you, her, you, all of y'all, get a delegation going. I know we can't fill the shoes, but I'd like to get somebody who could work with the DA's office, somebody who could work with the old, uh, police department, somebody who could work with City Hall, and keep Rebuilding the Village going, keep the New Life Institute going, keep the street team, the Hoops and Dreams going, I think we can do it. And anybody, if any, any one of y'all wanna join us, feel free.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, Utica Common Council, God bless you all, I'm Jerome McKenzie Senior, former councilman, like you said. Uh, I'd just like to say that one of the driving forces, I've known Pat my entire life, one of the driving forces that gave Patrick the energy to do what he did was the life that Utica afforded us when we were children, the programs, the org- The programs, the organization, the many things that the city of Utica put forth for us. The day camps, the parks, the sports teams, the many, many things that we were blessed to be able to do as youth in Utica. And what drove Patrick the most was the desire to bring that back. So with the city, the common council, with the track record and the history that we all talked about in the last few minutes, let us commit to working hard to bringing that back for the youth. We need an economic package, a recreational package. We need a better communication with the city. We've paved the road to communication with the district attorney's office, the police department. We need to fortify that, and we cannot do that without your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Jerome McKenzie and I, Craig Grant, are among the founding members of Hoops and Dreams. So we've been with Patrick the past 20-odd years. But among the team, Roger Patterson is top-flight security. And Roosevelt Patterson is the head of the street team. I am miscellaneous, so whenever he got an idea or whatever, he called me. Whenever it was something, he said, Craig, if there's something, if you either know how to do it or you know somebody that does. So I'm Mr. Miscellaneous, and it was a pleasure. I just, you know, I'm just grateful to have been part of the vision, to have been part of the team. I'm the original, one of the original photographers and video from Hoops and Dreams from its inception. So I have stuff for the past 20 years. And some pictures Patrick has never even seen, just too busy. Videos and stuff like that, interviews and things like that that I've done, just too busy in all of those years. So it's been a pleasure. It's been great. And yes, we will, none of us are gonna try to fill Patrick's shoes. But what we're gonna do is continue these programs and services, one day at a time, as a team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Just one, one thing I just want to mention. I know there are former councilperson Freddie Hamilton, who couldn't make it here tonight, and she is 100% with this crowd up here, and let's keep his dream alive and keep her working with city youth in the Cornhill and West Utica districts. Thank you. Okay, we have, next on the agenda, do we have to call for a public hearing? Let me, let me call for a vote on the proclamation first.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion. Second. This is gonna go for council? And we already read the proclamation, so let's call for a vote. Your votes, please.
Eight yeas adopted. Oh, nine yeas adopted. Sorry, he's up here.
Okay, next, we're gonna call for a public hearing on proposed ordinance number four, sale of 1122 Miller Street. Proposed ordinance number six, public hearing on zoning tax amendments. And proposed ordinance number six, sale of 313 James Street. Is anybody here that's gonna speak at the public hearing? No, correct? Okay. All right, the public hearing is now closed.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to move ordinance number four for sale of 1122 out of committee.
Second. There you go. Dig it out.
Ordinance number four, sale of 1122 Miller Street.
Ordinance number four, whereas the Utica Urban Renewal Agency has acquired 1122 Miller Street from Impact Cornhill LLC. The developer proposes to purchase 1122 Miller Street to construct a new mixed-use, multi-story building, which will include service provider space, rec facilities, and approximately 84 units of housing. With the purchase, require the payment, I believe it's gonna be $1 or $0? $1, correct?
Whatever, no, whatever state that election is.
It says zero, $0. Okay.
Call for a vote?
Call for the vote.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to committee, ordinance number six, the sale of 313 James Street, sir.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas the Urban Renewal Agency has acquired 313 James Street. Whereas a purchase offer for this property has been received by the Utica Urban Renewal Agency from Impact Cornhill LLC, and the developer proposes to purchase 313 James Street to construct a new mixed-use, multi-story building, which will include retail space and approximately 36 units of housing. And the purchase will require the payment of $0. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment period. We have six speakers tonight, and the first speaker, Cassandra Harris Lockwood. I believe she left. Okay. Nope, there she is. Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 32-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with this rule?
Oh, yes.
Okay, please state your name. You have three minutes.
I'm Cassandra Harris Lockwood, and I sent a proposal to the common council last month regarding funding for the Study Buddy Club. Study Buddy Club, as you know, is a 20-year-old organization. Actually started about the same time that Patrick started Hoops and Dreams. It's an educational program that we funded originally through state funds. We no longer have those funds. This program is transformative in the lives, in the lives of young people. And actually, we're talking right now to, or have been, talking to the state about starting a pilot project here in Utica to eventually make it statewide. And I just think it would be a wonderful testimony to the will of our community to support education for those who have the most difficult time getting a good one. And this way, it's a, it's a magical program that matches college students who've already achieved what the younger high school students are looking to accomplish. They work well together. It is very inexpensive. And as I asked the council to actually come up with, you know, a portion of the, from all of your ARPA monies, I don't know if this has been discussed. I don't really know your process in having it discussed. I've been told by my councilman that he would ask for a meeting with the mayor next week, but I would hope that you would all have this on your agendas because it is going to make a big difference. And as, as former councilman McKenzie noted, that there were programs for young people when we were coming up. And those programs don't exist anymore. And we need a new way of dealing with the deficits from our, our community. And education is one, and education is the one that can transform this city and also provide the, the, the workers for these, the $200 billion in, in investment that the federal government is making for our community. So we don't want to be importing all of these new engineers and technicians from outside. We want to grow them here, and this is the way we can do it. And this is the way we can put Utica on the map when it comes to transformation for the 21st century in education. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, Joseph Pacini. Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 32-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Joseph Pacini. I'm, I'm a local taxpayer, a property owner. I came to comment about the complete street, the bicycle lane. I know that the city indicated that within 90 days, they're gonna make a decision whether they're gonna keep it or dismantle it. I'm completely against it. I'm totally against it. I sent the mayor letter. I sent the common council letter, and I also sent some photographs. I'm the Director of Risk Management for a transportation company. I have 30-plus years insurance litigation experience, and we're in the middle of a lawsuit in Kingston, New York, involving a complete street and allowing bicycle lanes. When I came here tonight, I witnessed people in front of me, Genesee Street, in the bicycle lane because they couldn't even see what's going on. That bicycle lane is so narrow, Genesee Street's so narrow. Nothing good is gonna come up. You got parking, you have a narrow bike lane, and then you have a vehicle lane of traffic. I've also witnessed a central bus come down the street and really can't maneuver within that vehicle lane. So he'll encroach on the bicycle lane. Then you have, you have delivery services within the middle of the street. On top of that, you have, we're not prepared for emergency, what do we do when an emergency vehicle comes? What do we do when there's snow on the sides of the road? Somebody opens a car door into the bicycle lane. Somebody slides over. Again, unfortunately, in Kingston, a bus hit a bicyclist. He went underneath the bus, and he died. He succumbed to injuries. We are not yet named in the suit because they're going directly after the city of Kingston. I provided some background information, along with some contact information, and said, please be diligent, contact them, do your own investigation. This isn't one-sided. The other part of that is, with my putting the city of Utica on notice, you're now aware of a potential liability situation. So if something happens this point forward, the city of Utica is legally liable. In the matter, excuse me, in the matter of the city of Kingston, they actually had a common council meeting the week before the accident happened, and one of the members talked to everybody and said, we need to discuss this. Somebody's gonna get killed. And what prompted that was prior incidents that they had knowledge of. That's why right now, the city of Kingston is the primary defendant. Eventually, we may get brought back into it, but for now, everybody's telling us they're going after the city of Kingston. Again, when, when you come across, when you come up Genesee Street, in my eye, it's mass confusion, and I'm there all the time, and I know the roads and I know the city. So it's my opinion, the sooner you can flip that back, the better off you're gonna be.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, Amanda Potter. Common Council has provided you with a copy of Section 32-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes, sir.
State your name. You have three minutes.
Amanda Potter. I'm sure as many of you know from my husband coming and speaking, I'm the other owner of AMP Master Images. And first, I want to say thank you because the city was very responsive to me with my concerns about procurement. I was able to meet with Heather Moat. She was really understanding, very patient. What I'm here today to ask is to have the common council help me amend some of the ways that we do procurement within the city when it comes to the goods and services that we purchase. As a local, woman-owned business that has grown from the actual grassroots of the city as a proctor graduate, there aren't things within the procurement that incentivize people within the city to go out and go after these things. There's a lot of gray area, a lot of things that people don't understand. They don't understand the way that the city does the purchasing. It has a lot of jargon in it because it is written from the state level. And a lot of the times, it's not apples to apples when you look at these bids and these quotes. So my first thing that I would love to see happen is that if I could sit down with members of the common council at some point in time and just actually look at the way that we're structuring these bids and these quotes to, A, number one, and I know that this happens in the, in the city of Rome. If you bid on a job and you live within those city limits and you're a taxpayer and you're a business owner, when they look at all of the quotes, they say, okay, well, this person is investing in our city. They live in our city. They're qualified to do the work. They're responsive, responsible bidders. Can we give them a 5% swing, a 10% swing? Because a lot of the times, we are matching state contract pricing. And in my case, I've had an absolute fortune, the fortune, to be able to do uniforms within departments for the city. And I'm actually less expensive than state contract pricing, and I'm local, and I'm also a woman-owned business. So I would just look for your help to help me start keeping more of this business here because we've grown from nothing, and we have two great kids that are within the city, and we want them to stay here. So I just would really appreciate some help from you guys and just to know that the city was very responsive and very helpful, and I appreciate that as well. So, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Howard Potter. Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3-2-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Howard Potter. So I'm here on a different matter. Obviously, a lot of people know I've been very vocal about our school district, the issues at hand over the past three years, and where we need to take our city moving forward. I mean, many of you here are well aware, we're trying to get more people to move to our area, have employees, grow our families here, you name it. You know, the council speaks about, speaks about people buying homes here, and I've spoke about this in the past at the common council meetings. Couple weeks ago, a child in our own high school was stabbed. And it was made, it made public yesterday that our superintendent promoted that the metal detectors were not adequate. And these metal detectors were purchased by our past superintendent, and we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, if not more, on them. Now we just have to invest another couple hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Nolan also made it known that we had to replace and update 170 cameras, most of which in proctor. Now, all this is, that I'm talking about is about safety. It's about our children. It's about the employees in our school district that we're trying to retain. It's about keeping people moving here. So on top of that, Mr. Nolan also activated our texting feature for our parents. Now, this is something that I've gone to the school board, and I've made it clear in years past that we need something like this. Lo and behold, no one knew we had it. Our superintendent never activated it. Again, this is talking about safety and the well-being and keeping our parents informed. We want people to move to this great city, make it safe for our children in and out of school. The school district made it clear that the violence is pouring in from, from outside the school with gang violence. It is, it was also made well-known that our city owes our school district a large sum that has not been paid to date, and they make this announcement at every school board meeting. Now, I do not know all the facts, but someone must. Again, I say, you want people to move here, right? Who is going to show up to the superintendent meeting that he's having this Friday, where he's calling on stakeholders, the politicians, because we've had mismanagement in funds, the safety issues? And he's invited everybody, so I don't know who from the common council will show up to this meeting or if they've been invited yet, but I would really like to see our, our common council take the initiative to get involved. And I have seen people from our common council come to our school board meetings and speak. Our police department needs, needs more help. Everyone knows they are understaffed and they need the city's support to combat the crime. What is more important, a 0% property tax increase or keeping our children safe in, in and out of our schools? I have watched some of the council make it clear that the school district issues should not be brought up here. But on the other hand, we want people to move here. I wonder who from this council is going to step up and be the change our city needs to keep our children safe. How many more children have to be hurt before it's the common council's issue? Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Natalie Williams. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3-2-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
I am.
Okay, state your name. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Natalie Williams. Two brief issues. One is, I'm a proud homeowner, and it's a historic building. I'm gonna request a meeting with the URA committee regarding that building, since there have been a number of issues regarding it. But I mostly wanted to talk about, and I... But I mostly wanted to talk about, an idea whose time I think has definitely come. There are brownfields. There are areas that are not being utilized because of whatever the poisonous soil issue is. And I came up with an idea that I thought that at least the URA might want to entertain the Water Street and Whitesboro, Water and Whitesboro Street lots, which, uh, pretty much, there's a couple of, uh, containers on there for Handshake City. The city is looking to build something there. There are no takers because it's a brownfield. So I came up with an idea. One was called Earthship, uh, Earth Globe Sculpture 1, which was going to be, um, sphere that, um, had all kinds of features, was going to be made of steel. And that was presented a couple of years ago, delayed, delayed, delayed. Uh, because of the price of everything, I scrapped that idea. Came up with Earth Globe Sculpture 2, which was basically a bowl, a step bowl on the interior that had three sections. One, a vertical green space, a vertical garden. Two, a theater. Uh, three, a dining space. And, uh, it was going to be capped with, um, tires. In fact, the whole thing was going to be made out of tires, which are pretty much the best, cheapest, um, brick you'd come up with because you can actually sledgehammer dirt into it, and it's a 300-pound brick. So I thought that, uh, I should inform the people of Utica. And if they want more details on this idea, which is not even that new, it's probably 30, 40 years old, uh, you can contact me at domesforthepeople@gmail.com. Because there are projects, there are things that could be done in this community on wasted space, land that cannot be used for anything, that's not going to be used for, by any professional construction company because of, uh, these other problems. And, um, could be creatively used to have people enjoy it. That could be an educational space, a community, a community center, a green space. And, um, probably provide some degree of employment for the youth and space for the youth or senior groups or other groups that don't have a space right now. So I'd like to just say that and try to be more progressive. I know that all of this is about, well, what's this, what's, what's the spot? And how much you want to, how much you're going to get for it? And, you know, what's the contractor going to do?
You have 30 seconds.
But think outside of that box and think about the people who are going to be using these things and what we can do with this wasteland that is available right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Sparkle Anthony.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sparkle Anthony.
Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3-2-44. Public comment period, are you in agreement with the rule?
Is this it right here?
Yes.
Oh, is it here? I see it, I agree.
Yep, please state your name, you have three minutes.
Sparkle Anthony. So I'm up here, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's serving. It's not easy to serve the public. Thank you for showing up, being patient with everyone, serving the community. Just be proud of yourself that you show up all the time and just thank you for your service, everybody here. And also, I want to speak on behalf of the Study Buddy Club. So about two years ago, my two children, well, actually, all three of my children attended the Study Buddy Club. And I just want to speak about the importance of supporting a program like that. So, um, it was effective for my three children. I took on a volunteer leadership approach at, um, with the Study Buddy Club. You know, we got on a bus in Corn Hill and we went over to Hamilton College. My children loved it, all the children loved it. They were able to get out of the community for a day, see different environment, be in a college setting, be on campus, walk around with other students, get tutored from other college students who were also enthusiastic and happy to see them. When they got off the bus, they were happy to see all the children. And they took the job, the students of, of Hamilton College took the job very seriously. And it was good for me to see that. And then we got to eat, we got to, you know, read together, we also danced together, we took walks on campus. I feel like it's important, um, for myself, a first college, um, first generation college graduate, that children in, in the cities be exposed as some magnitude to the college life. And I felt like this, this was great. Every weekend to get on a bus and actually take a trip to a college campus, these children faces were lit up. If you guys saw it, you will understand why I'm up here telling you that this is a program worth supporting. And my two older sons went there, they went to the next grade. It built up their self-esteem. It built up their, um, ability to learn faster and be, um, enthusiastic about learning. So, um, in a program, in a life like this and everything that we're going through, we want our children to go to college. We want our children at Corn Hill to attend college. And I feel like this is a program that needs to be supported. It's very important, it's life-changing, and thank you for your time.
Okay, that concludes our public comment period. Uh, we have no common council guests this evening. Moving on, communications from the mayor? Okay, communications from the mayor. Report of the city officers. Are there any reports from the city officers? Chief Noonan.
Uh, Mr. President, I just, I provided the council, last council meeting with, uh, some crime data regarding gun violence. Uh, I got some requests for additional, um, data for other offenses. And I just passed it out to the council today for you guys to review. Um, and other than that, I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, uh, take note that Buffalo Bills are playing on Thanksgiving and they're route to the Super Bowl. So I appreciate you watching.
Thanksgiving's rolling.
Thank you, Chief. Derek, anything from URA?
Uh, I'll just say that, you know, we launched the New in Crowd app earlier this month. Uh, it's an app that's meant to support small businesses coming out of the pandemic uh, by rewarding people, residents and visitors for shopping at local Utica businesses. We've had a great launch so far, over a thousand downloads. Um, and I think it's, it's really been a good help and good publicity for the city. Um, and I'll say right now, if you're a business in the city of Utica and you want to participate and become a redeeming business, uh, if folks come to your store and redeem, uh, the half moon coins or tokens that we've, we put on this app, uh, somebody redeems 10 half moons and $10 worth, you're actually going to get reimbursed double by the city, uh, for the first quarter of this, this app launch. So just want to put that out there.
Thank you. I do have the app on my phone, by the way. Okay, codes commissioner, Marcus Phillips.
I guess I'm going to thank the clerk because we have civilian public safety, um, board and they needed some clerical assistance. And Melissa was one of the people that stepped up, um, and said, you know, whatever they need, my office will be there, we'll help them. They gave them a mailbox and they're helping them with some of their clerical issues. So I'm going to thank Melissa for that. Um, and I just also want to, you know, we're busy in codes, um, which is a good thing this time of year. Uh, in November, there's still a lot of construction going on. Um, gets dark earlier, guys are still out there. So just encourage everybody to be safe and then congratulate the people on the council and everything because it's, construction seasons are lasting longer and longer because there's more and more work to do. So that's a good thing, our city is growing. We went on a sweep today of North Utica, and I have to say, despite the weakness of their council representation, the neighborhood seems to be doing really good.
I called Marcus, asked where he was. He said, I think it might be Herkimer Road. You don't know where Herkimer Road is?
Oh, good lord. Uh, yeah, well, the cops usually have to call codes and get directions. Um, but.
When you go over the bridge, they don't know how to get you.
Um, and then, yeah, just, uh, I, I wanted to tell everybody, especially the people that work in the building, um, that there are raffle baskets. Um, the people that are sitting, there, there's raffle baskets up there. And they're supporting a former code officer who's now a firefighter. Uh, you know, I don't want to say too much because I haven't spoken to him about it, but he's going through, you know, some health issues and he needs some help. And so all the departments kind of came together as teams to put together baskets to raffle off, to try to, to try to raise some money to, to, to help him with his medical issues. So, um, you know, I encourage any of you guys to come buy, donate a basket or drop off some tickets and try to help us, um, help our brother out. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Utica Fire Department Deputy Chief Guy Giselli.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, okay. All right, moving on. Any cash report?
No cash report.
No cash report, okay. Petitions, remontrances and appeals. We're going to be allowing three minutes. First district, council member Katie Iow.
Thank you, President Protam. Uh, I just want to thank everybody coming out tonight to speak. And the only other thing I have to highlight is, uh, the East Utica Neighborhood Association meeting was this past week, West Uticas and South Uticas. So thank you to everybody who came out to those. And, uh, the next one will be for West Utica, December 14th. So if anybody has questions, I'll be there and we'll see you monthly at those. Thank you.
All right, up next, second district council member, Robert Burmaster.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Just please, have a happy Thanksgiving and spend some time with your family. It's important. Thank you.
Third district council member, Celeste Friend.
I'll just, uh, I'll just echo that sentiment of having a happy Thanksgiving and in the spirit of the season of gratitude, um, express my gratitude for all the people who work really hard on behalf of the city and make it a better place for people to live. Um, codes officers and firefighters and police officers and, um, and urban planners who set up great apps on our phones and all that. So I'm really, I feel deep gratitude for everybody who makes the city a better place to live. But tonight, especially to Deputy Chief Ed Noonan for teaching me how to turn my phone into a hotspot. Thank you, Mr. President Protam, that's all I have.
All right, up next, fourth district council member, Majority Leader Frank Biola.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. Um, I just have some suggestions maybe for the Potters. Um, I understand that we only notify jobs out in the newspaper. I'm just wondering if we can start doing it on our website. It's, it's more like communications and stuff. So a lot of times, as, as a worker and stuff, we, we don't see every piece of newspaper that comes out with the bid process. So I'm just wondering, maybe we could talk to Frank Matullo or something to start posting, not only on the paper, like even our public hearings, um, start posting them on our webpage. So there's more information, people, and some, some people don't get the newspaper, but they'll look on our website and see our postings. So, uh, maybe we could talk to Frank Matullo and start moving our postings for our public hearing and possibly anything to do with our contract supply, which my colleague sits on there for their, um, proposals for bid. So, uh, we'll talk to them in the future and maybe we can make that happen so, uh, it's readily available. And I'd just like to echo my colleagues' Thanksgiving wishes. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, fifth district council member, Venice Urban.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm losing my voice, but, um, we had the dedication for, um, Campbell Street Park, um, Pastor Johnson. If any of you haven't seen it yet, um, take a ride by there and look at it. It's, it's really nice what the city of Utica did. A lot of people showed up to be a part of that. So that was really nice. Also, um, I was listening to him talking about the Study Buddy Club. And I live in Johnson Park, so I see the kids coming over to Martin Luther King, getting on the bus and then coming back, so I know it's an active program. Um, lastly, I want to thank the city of Utica for everything they've done with the, with the roads. They, the people on Miller Street are really thrilled that they finished that part of Miller Street because we didn't think they were going to make it before the deadline, but that got done, so we thank you for that. Um, I don't think we have anything coming up. Happy Thanksgiving, happy Christmas, all of that. Um, Veterans Day, I went to the steakhouse to get a free coupon. And then I went to, um, Rattler and got a free meal. Then I went to Olive Garden and got a free meal. And I finished, and I finished off tonight, I made it to Applebee's and got a free meal, so.
Well deserved, sir, well deserved.
I'd like to make a request, if you're going to keep avoiding paying sales tax, keep doing it in New York.
All right. Up next, sixth district council member, Joseph Beatrice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first thing I'd like to do is, uh, wish my colleague, uh, um, a belated birthday to Frank DeBrango yesterday. So happy birthday. Same thing, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And, uh, so, uh, Marcus, I, I was with him today. He didn't get out of the car to say hi or anything, but, um, I just want to reiterate, we are pretty caught up on the leaves. I know the cutoff date, like in North Utica, I think was the 14th and the 17th is the last date. They are going to try to go one more week to pick up places, weather permitting. Um, so be aware of that. I'd also like, uh, there's a lot of good stuff going on in the city. And I'd like to congratulate the county, the city and Mohawk Valley Gardens. And if anybody gets a chance, take a ride down to the Nexus Center and walk through. And, uh, you'd be very proud to have that building and that facility to be part of our city. Um, I know everybody put a little bit into it. And, uh, I have to say, Rob Esch had, uh, great vision on that. I was there Friday afternoon, 30 teams from all over, uh, the state. You couldn't even move in the place. And there's tournaments booked all the way through April where hotels are filled. And it's going to be a great thing, I think, tax-wise, uh, for us to, uh, you know, to gain some extra revenue. And then lastly, I'd like to thank, uh, also the administration on finishing most of my projects. They haven't got my Christmas tree up yet, but Marcus tells me that'll be up in a couple of days. Um, I was up in, at, uh, the Cinderella Field today and we've had a terrible problem there with parking lot and all that. It's all repaved and they redid the pavilion. Uh, they did most of the dog park, they're going to finish the landscaping in the spring. And, uh, just thanks, everybody, because everybody is trying to do the best they can. And I think we're all heading in the right direction. Thank you very much, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. All right, up next, councilwoman at large and minority leader, Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. Got a question, Deputy Chief Noonan. Uh, coyotes, are there issues with coyotes in Upper East Utica?
Nothing of the sort.
No, you haven't, nothing running around, no calls?
I believe you, but I don't know if we've been called.
The reason why I say that, because last night, there was a bunch of coyotes across the street. I was just wondering if people were having a bunch of issues up there, you know? Because I know feral cat population just like disappeared. I was just curious.
I guess some people were talking about the animals or the smugglers. When he's a coyote, I thought he was a human trap.
No, I mean, they're, they're everywhere up there. I was just curious if there was any incidents or anything.
All right, well, let's, let's all have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman at large, Samantha Colasmo Testa, you have the floor.
I've got nothing tonight. Thank you. I'm tapped.
I just have a few comments. Uh, my grandson tomorrow, he's turning two years old, so, uh, we are going to celebrate our birthdays together, so it's great. I got a brother coming in for Thanksgiving from Florida via Michigan. He's going to the Michigan game, the football game. And then he's going to head our way, we're going to have a nice family gathering. We have it every year at my mom's house, who lives right across the street from me, which is very convenient. And, uh, so I want everybody to enjoy their family because, you know, uh, they are getting up in age and, and just enjoy every moment of it. So I appreciate that, uh, that, that my brother took the time to come in from out of town. So that, that was a good thing. And that's it, that's all I have. All right. All right, moving on. Get some, uh, legislation out of the way. Proposed resolution number two.
Mr. President, I'd like to move number two. It's for the resolution to fill the vacancy of the Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank. The appointment, Celeste Friend.
All right, do I have a second? Okay.
Call for vote.
Your votes, please.
Nine.
Pretty self-explanatory, all right, thank you.
Nine, he's adopted.
All right.
Congratulations.
Next piece of legislation, proposed resolution, uh, resolution number three, authorizing sale of the Bear and Wine to the Bank of Utica.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Second vice, Celeste Friend. The sponsor is the Bank of Utica. Bank of Utica, the event name is the Bank of Utica New Year's Eve. Date of the event, Saturday, December 31st at 7:00 PM. Sunday to Sunday, January 1st at 12:15 AM. Location of the event, Bank of Utica, 222 Genesee Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Your votes.
Nine, he's adopted.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to move resolution number four for the appointment of Commissioner Deeds for Joseph Beatrice.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner Deeds and, and for the city of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, ending December 31st, 2024, Joseph. Joseph Beatrice, 524 Real Drive, Utica, New York, 13502. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Resolution Number Five.
Second.
Second, Williamson. Okay. Commissioner Deeds, be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, and ending December 31, 2024. Frank Miola, 33 Nobro, Utica, New York. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Resolution Number Six, Commissioner Deeds for Venice Irving.
Okay. Second, Williamson. Be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, ending December 31, 2024. Venice Urban, 22 Johnson Park, Utica, New York. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Resolution Number Four, the appointment for Commissioner Deeds, Robert Burmaster.
Okay. For a two-year.
I'm sorry, Number Seven.
For a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, and ending December 31, 2024. Commissioner Deeds, Robert Burmaster, 1426 City Street, Utica, New York. Your votes.
Mr. President.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, Pro Temp, I'd like to move Proposed Resolution Number Eight, Commissioner Deeds. Frank DeBrango.
Commissioner Deeds for Frank DeBrango at 1008 Beckwood Place, Utica, New York, 13501, for a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, ending December 31, 2024. Your votes, please.
Oops, somebody didn't vote.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Resolution Number Nine for the appointment, Andrew Castilla.
All right. Commissioner Deeds, be it.
Second.
Second, Williamson. Sorry about that. Be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, ending December 31, 2024. Andrew Castilla, 1410 Florah Court, Utica, New York. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move another Commissioner Deeds, Resolution Number Ten, Martha Ann Markovitz.
Second.
Second, Williamson. Be it resolved, the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person as Commissioner Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing November 16, 2022, ending December 31, 2024. Martha Ann Markovitz, 7429 East Main Street, West Millen, New York. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay. See, next up, Proposed Resolution Number Eleven, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1306 Seymour Ave. Anybody want to introduce it? Celeste Friend?
Irving's moving it. Celeste's second.
Urban's second. All right. Whereas the Urban Renewal Agency is the owner of 1306 Seymour Ave, whereas an offer purchased 1306 Seymour Ave has been received by the Urban Renewal Agency from Ha Ken to consolidate and landscape this property that has a paved driveway on it with his adjacent property. The purchase price for this property is $250. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer Ordinance Twelve into committee for the sale of 1306 Seymour Ave.
Second by Friend. All right. Send committee. Okay. Next up, Proposed Resolution Thirteen, call for a public hearing on the sale of 1636 Dudley Ave. Sponsored by Councilmember Urban, second, Celeste Friend. Whereas an offer to purchase 1636 Dudley Avenue has been received by the Urban Renewal Agency from Omar Mohammed Del Faez and Islam Mohammed to renovate primary residence slash income property. The purchase price for property is $43,000. Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer to committee, Ordinance Number Fourteen, for the sale of 1636 Dudley Ave.
Second.
Second, Friend. Okay. 1636 Dudley Ave is now in committee.
Councilman Beatrice, would you like a motion for this next?
Up next, Proposed Resolution Number Fifteen. We are waiving the Thursday rule.
Motion to waive the Thursday rule, Mr. President?
All the rest of the legislation. Okay.
Second is motion.
All right. Resolution referring a paper street to the city engineer for review. Do I have a sponsor? Beatrice, second. Miola.
Word.
Keep her busy.
Whereas Section 7088B provides that no ordinance shall be passed making, authorizing the sale or lease of a city real estate under the control of the city except by a vote of three-fourths of all common council members. And whereas this is a lot located on Dawes Ave in the City of Utica, 60 feet wide and 114 feet deep, located seven, located at 700 Dawes Avenue and 620 Dawes Avenue, that that is vacant and is known as a paper street. And whereas the fore-said property was at one time designed to be an extension of Deerfield Drive West. And whereas this property can no longer be used for the purpose intended and should be decertified, abandoned and sold so that it would become a usable and taxable property that has been purchased by a reasonable bidder of an auction conducted by the city. Be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica does hereby refer this matter to the office of the city engineer for review to determine if the city should sell this property and if so, prepare the necessary survey and other legal documents to authorize the decertification and abandonment of the fore-said paper street and submit the same to the common council so that an ordinance can be introduced to sell the fore-said described lot. Your votes, please.
Your votes.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay. Up next, we have legislation, Proposed Ordinance Number Sixteen, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on convenience stores and smoke shops in the City of Utica, not less than a three-month period that may be extended. Sponsored by Colasimo Testa. Do I have a second?
As we desire to.
Full counsel.
Full counsel.
Second.
Melissa, you got me?
In ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on convenience stores and smoke shops in the City of Utica for not less than a three-month period that may be extended. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Utica did on November 4th, 2020, and February 3rd, 2021, adopt new legislation designed to regulate what is referred to as a convenience store and smoke shop and their location in the City of Utica. Whereas since the adoption of the new zoning law in February 3rd, 2021, new questions have arisen with regard to terms and application of these two entities. And whereas it has been determined by members of the Common Council that these new ordinances require full further study and possible revision that necessitates that a moratorium would be enacted that would halt the approval of such entities entities for a period of time to allow for study to be conducted. Now, whereas the Common Council did impose a moratorium, it set forth herein for a period of six months, which will expire. And whereas the council does hereby extend the moratorium for an additional three months from the date of the adoption herein. Be it ordained that the Commissioner of Urban and Economic Development, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Codes and any other appropriate city agency shall not issue any permission to permit the development and or establishment of any convenience stores, neighborhood retail stores and/or smoke shop regardless of the current zoning classifications for a period of three months, 90 days commencing November 16, 2022. Your votes, please.
Nine yeas adopted.
Okay. Proposed Ordinance Number Eighteen, sponsored by Councilmember Colasimo Testa, ordinance amending the zoning code.
Chair, I'm going to make a motion to pull this out of committee, onto the floor, make an amendment and then place it back into committee.
Second.
Second.
Celeste Friend, we're going to make a amendment.
I'm going to take out the slash and add and/or.
Okay.
Can I add slash and slash or?
Everybody agree to the amendment?
And/or.
All right. Do I have a motion? We're going to put this in committee, correct?
Motion, Samantha, you need to make a motion, put it in committee now. I already, I'll make the motion for the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Anybody?
Motion to refer to committee after amended. Senate committee now.
Senate committee.
I'd like to introduce section, or proposed number ordinance 19 to the floor. I just have to make one additional amendment to that.
Second. Do I have?
We don't have the amendment. She's got to say the amendment first, Frank. So, the motion, the amendment's going to be to add, after of the zoning code be amended to add the definition neighborhood convenience store.
Was it, where are you looking?
So, if you go to where it says in the first sentence, be it ordained that the section 2-14-3-37 definitions of the zoning code be amended to.
Yep.
I want to add, I want to state now to add the definition of neighborhood convenience stores.
So, be amended to add whole.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. We're going to place in committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion to move to committee. Yep.
Any names? Okay.
As amended. Yep. Number 20, I'd like to introduce, similar to the same thing, be it ordained that section 2-29 definitions of the zoning code be amended to adding neighborhood convenience store, period. And then have the definition foul. I got it all written down. I'll say, I'll give it to you guys. I'll give you these copies so we can see it.
So, I'll second that.
Second.
Just so that it flows a little better and when reading.
All right. It's on the floor. Any minute.
Motion to refer to committee as amended. Yep.
Okay. No names on committee?
Yep.
Send committee.
Number 21, I'd like to introduce to the floor without any amendments and place it back into committee.
Second.
Motion, move to committee, yes.
Committee?
Yep.
No names?
Proposed ordinance number 22, I'd like to make a motion to introduce to the floor and make an amendment.
Say the amendment.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that I'm introducing it so that it's on the floor and then placing it back in the committee. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Now, I'd like to make a motion to amend, just changing the capital A and adding to lowercase a and then adding the use table. Adding the use table.
Adding the use table.
Please make sure Brian gets all these amended copies clear and is amended on the floor. Motion to refer to committee as amended.
Second.
Second. All right. Send committee.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for proposed number 23 to the floor.
Second.
And I'd like to make amendment to add the use table.
Second.
Okay. Put it in committee.
Yep. Motion to refer to committee as amended.
Second.
The next motion I'd like to make, I'd like to introduce proposed ordinance number 24 to the floor.
Second.
Any amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment to add the use table.
Second.
Thank you. Much easier.
Second. Okay.
Motion to refer to committee as amended, Mr. President.
Second.
Yep. Now, I'd like to make.
Ordinance number 25.
25. I'd like to make a motion to introduce to the floor.
Second.
And then I'd like to make a motion to add the use table.
Go. Second.
Motion to refer to committee as amended, Mr. President. Oh, wait, hang on. Want to get more?
No.
Actually, can I rescind my amendment for 25? Sure. Because I don't need, it's not doing anything to the U.S. Motion to rescind then. Samantha.
We didn't get a second on it anyway.
Yeah, a motion to rescind. Okay. Rescind. Thank you. So, as, without amending, as. Yeah, 25's plain. 25's staying the same.
25, no amendment.
No amendment.
We're going to refer to committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wrote on the wrong one. No amendments to 25.
Okay. End committee.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce proposed number ordinance 26 to the floor.
Second.
And then I'd like to make a motion to amend piece number 26 to add the use table.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to refer to committee as amended, Mr. President. Okay. Number 20, number 27, I'd like to just introduce back into the floor and then place it back in the committee. Motion to refer to committee number 27, Mr. President.
Do I have a second for motion?
Make a motion to introduce proposed number 28, 28 to the floor. And now I'd like to make a motion to put it back in.
Second, introduce it to the floor?
Yep.
Got yellow?
And now I'd like to make a motion to put it back into committee.
Second.
Any opposed? End committee.
I'd like to make a motion to add proposed ordinance number 29 to the floor.
Second.
And I'd like to make a motion to amend the title of it where it says ordinance amending the zoning code. I'd just like it to also add the amendment to section supplemental regulations. Motion to refer to committee as amended.
Read it again, how you want it.
Just ordinance amending the zoning code, section supplemental regulation.
All right. Do I have a motion to put it in committee?
Motion to refer to committee as amended, yes.
Second. Nobody opposed? End committee.
I'd like to introduce proposed ordinance number 34 to the floor and I'd like, I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to make an amendment that it's referred to the planning board on the December 16th meeting, or excuse me, December 15th meeting.
Is it 21st?
No, it's December 15th. It's the planning board meeting, so I got to make a motion to amend that.
Okay. Do I have a second? On the motion to amend, Miola?
Yep. We got to vote on this one, Mr. President. And I'd also like to make a motion to amend, yep, December 15, 2022. And actually, can I also, I'd like to put, let me make the second amendment first before I forget that, changing December 7th to December 21st. Is there a second for the amendment to change the date of the public hearing?
They have a second on that? Yes? Okay. So, we amended the legislation.
Yep. And I'd like to make one, one last amendment on the, to where it says these, the Utica the Utica Common Council proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. Proposed amendments will be referred to the Planning Board. Judge, does that suffice for a copy of each of these documents going to the Planning Board? Or should we still do a separate resolution?
That's correct. I recommend it.
Recommend doing a second resolution referring all the documents? Or can we add, making sure that these proposed amendments get referred to the council? Or referred to the planning? Okay, so then where it says, for a report thereon, and I'd like to make a second whereas.
Proposed ordinance, can we just go with the numbers? Proposed ordinance on this date, 26, 7, 8, 9, whatever.
No, what I want to do is I just want to make sure that a copy of these proposed ordinances are sent to the Planning Board.
Do I have a second on that? So it's more clear, it's clarified, okay.
Yep, and a copy of the proposed ordinances be referred to the Planning Board with a recommendation to the council. No later.
No later than?
Than.
December meeting, what is it, 20?
21st.
That's when the public hearing is, yeah.
All right, we are going to vote on this?
Yeah, it's fine.
With the amendments? Okay, your votes.
May I second that? Will you second that?
As amended.
Nine nays as amended.
And then this last one, like I said, I'd just like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 35 to the floor and then put it back into committee. And again, this just clarifies the original zoning law that was passed now has the sections attached to it. I don't think we can. I think this also has to be referred to the Planning Board. I just, I'd rather just not vote on this and then them say that we don't need it. Just let them know.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, refer to committee. Anybody opposed? Send committee. Okay, let's give it back to...
Mr. President, I got a couple pieces of the stop signs.
Yep, Number 30?
Yes. Ordinance Number 30, intersection where stops being required. Section 2-16335, section C, intersection where stops required to be amended to include the following. South Street and Tilden, southwest corner, to control eastbound traffic. Further be ordained, the proper signage be erected where necessary.
Second, Celeste Friend, your votes.
Just helping you out, Mr. President. I know your mouth got a little dry up there.
Nine nays adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Ordinance Number 31, intersection where stops being required. Ordained, section 2-16358, section C, intersection where stops being required be amended to include the following. South Street and Tilden, northeast corner, to control westbound traffic. Further ordained, proper signage be erected where necessary.
Do I have a second? Second, Friend. Okay, your votes.
Nine nays adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move or propose ordinance Number 32, intersection where stops being required, to amend section 2-16358, Schedule C, intersection where stops required be amended to include the following. Tilden Ave and South, at South Street, northwest corner, to control southbound traffic. Further be ordained, that the proper signage be erected where necessary.
Second, Burmaster. Your votes.
I'm giving you guys a break up there. I know how it is.
Nine nays adopted.
Mr. President, my last proposed legislation is Number 33, to be ordained to amend 2-16358, Schedule C, intersection where stops be required to be amended to include the following. Tilden Ave at South Street, southeast corner, to control northbound traffic. To be further ordained, the proper signage be erected where necessary.
Second, Burmaster. Okay, your votes.
Nine nays adopted.
I believe everything is out of committee, correct, that we took out earlier?
Wait, before you adjourn, I just want to make, can we please have a copy of each of those proposed ordinance amendments to the Planning Board for them at their meeting tomorrow? So they'll have a whole month to review.
All right, second, Miola. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Have a great evening.